Three minutes, Doug. Let's get on headsets. Three minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Council members. Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wozniak.
Here.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Here.
Heinchel, absent.
Thank you. First order of business is citizen input. Per the rules, there is a three-minute-per-person time limit to address the council on any topic of the person's choosing, and we won't have a problem with the total time today. So the first speaker is Paul Muckscow of Nineteen Dalton Drive.
Hello. Are you folks familiar with a pickleball?
Yeah.
You are? You are? You are? Just played with a hard plastic ball, but a wooden paddle. It makes a lot of noise. There's a pickleball court being built eight feet from my property line on Twenty-One Dalton Drive, and it's been approved by the CDS, and it's been laid out with the help of the CDS. And my question is, it relates to the noise that a pickleball court makes. And I've done studies and research, and pickleball courts are known for yelling and noise that is something like a snare drum being played. And I've sent you all two different emerands about the noise associated with pickleball, the problems with the noise, and the lawsuits that have been ensued. Nobody in this neighborhood knew that a pickleball court was going in behind the house. It's a new house, at Twenty-One Dalton Drive, and established name. The CDS did not do any sound study. They didn't care with the neighborhood. They simply approved this pickleball court like it was any other private use accessory for the property. There was no due diligence done before the permit was issued. If there had been, they would have known this would create a problem. Average pickleball court games, excuse me, average about seventy decibels per game, and the highest decibel level is up around ninety. It's not like tennis. Tennis makes about half the noise that a pickleball court does. The Bellumistin noise code is fifty-five decibels in a residential neighborhood. Every game of pickleball that's played on this court is going to violate the city code for noise. The noise is impulsive in character, and it has the same hertz, they call it, which is the pitch, of a garbage truck backing up. And it's an alert, like a dog barking or drums being played. My wife and I played golf at Metfield Golf Course a week and a half ago, and there are two courts out there. There were two people on one court playing pickleball. The fifth hole out there goes south to north, and the tee is right across the street. We heard pickleball played on the court. We played the hole, and on the green, we could hear the pickleballs being hit, which is eight hundred feet away. So... Oh, okay. Do you have any questions?
We usually don't do a back and forth, but they'll get a chance to comment after all those speakers.
Can I read the comments later then? I'll be able to read the comments.
They'll say them. It'll just be a few minutes. There's only one more speaker. Thank you. The second speaker is Ken Nelson of Fourteen Kirkbridge Lane.
I just wanted to take an opportunity this evening to greet you guys. I'm Ken Nelson with the Bellumistin Recycle Foundation. I've got Lou Sterick, Dan Heavries, and Ed Fisher joining me tonight. You'll see us about every ten years, so that's a good thing. And we had a situation came down, and it was like pennies from heaven. Our county grant came through last Friday, and the county money comes to the state, and then it worked through the city finance to help us do whatever we need to do with it. But then we had to find a truck, and if you know anything about supply chain issues, the truck we wanted was pretty specific. I went down to Asylum. Guy had three hundred and fifty trucks. No truck for us. Ed did his due diligence on Saturday. We found a truck. We reached out to Karen, who unfortunately can't join us tonight, so I'll field questions in her behalf. On the truck we found, it's kind of interesting. We came here ten years ago, got a truck for twenty-one thousand dollars. We're still running that truck, but we're on the backside of the lifestyle of it. That truck was twenty-one thousand. We've got a bid on the table and in hand for thirty-eight thousand, seven ninety-something. We've got forty-five thousand worth of county money, so we're playing with house money here. But I really want to give a big thank you to Wanda, Jason, and Karen especially, because I know it was like eleventh-hour facilitation for the paperwork for you guys, and I appreciate your consideration as an item tonight. So when Item F comes around, if you've got any questions, we'll certainly address them, but it's house money. Okay?
Thank you. It's now time for a council member reply.
I just got a question of the gentleman that I think maybe he left about the pickleball -- or there he is, about the pickleball court. I mean, he's talking about, I'm sure, it's all things, it's going to be lighted, I'm sure. And I don't... Sorry?
Yes.
I don't know what kind of, how many lights or how bright these lights are going to be, or what kind of disturbance these lights would create in the neighborhood there.
I can answer that question, but there are two fifteen-foot light stations now that are by the court. One will be on each side of the fairway, so there'll be twenty-foot-high lights in this backyard.
So that'll put out a lot of light in a residential area, then? I'm assuming.
Yeah, I don't know. Is, if there's anybody, if it's appropriate, Jason, if somebody from community development wanted to speak on the issue or...
Mayor, if you wanted to ask a member of the staff to come up and answer some council questions, you can do that.
Yeah.
I brought this up the last reading I attended, and our man came up and spoke, and I didn't get a whole lot of support. It is awfully close to the lot line, and the bedroom is right there, and you know it's going to be noisy. And, you know, if it gets to be noisy, we're going to enforce it. And after ten o'clock, you know, there's a problem with the noise ordinance. And, you know, why it's got allowed in the first place, I'll never know. Granted, it's not in the book one way or the other, but, you know, maybe we should have been a little more researching it. I guess we even helped them plot it to put it in there. Maybe there wasn't a whole lot of forethought or afterthought or any thought.
Doug, did you want to say anything about it? Maybe help the council out?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. There are some lights on the plan, and Taylor could share the details with those if you would like. But we did look in the code and cannot find areas in the code that would disallow it, so that's all we can fall back on is the code. And so noise violations haven't happened yet. They could in the future, I suppose, like they could at a basketball court or swimming pool party or a short-term rental debt gathering. So we've advised them to, you know, call if they feel like that's happening once the court is complete. Staff advised them on setbacks where they could put the court. We didn't actually lay it out, but we did help them, you know, with the feet from the property line that it would have to be. And so the builder, you know, had somebody design that. So lights, likewise, we don't have anything in code that would prevent. I mean, you have streetlights, you have home security lights that come on with motion when they're activated, so we just don't see an area that would prevent those from going in. If you want some more details on the lights, I can ask Taylor to come up and share those.
You know, I'm sure pickleball weren't in the code when it was built or when we adopted it, but sometimes you've got to think a little bit ahead and use a little bit of common sense. We seem to do a whole lot of black and white, and not a whole lot of, let's think about this, and maybe that's not such a good idea.
Well, as a legal matter, I think you can just say, gee, that's not such a good idea. There's all kinds of recreational things in people's backyards. I mean, you could have a swimming pool back there and have kids making noise, and it's all, you know...
To my knowledge, this is the first one. I know there's some tennis courts that reach out to the POA and ask them about their pickleball courts that are in close proximity to homes, and they were not aware of complaints or not received complaints on the ones at Metfield and other places. Also reached out to our police chief and asked him if they had complaints on other pickleball courts around town, and they has not gotten any. So this is the first one we've seen, and so, you know, if that's something you think staff needs to entertain looking at for future courts, we certainly can do that.
Is this court completed yet?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Is there any play been taken place on it yet?
Not that I'm aware of. They don't have, it's not done yet, so the house is not complete. They shouldn't be over there occupying the structure.
So it's a new home?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, in this particular instance, if there isn't anything that would prevent that being built at this particular time, we couldn't do something to stop, I mean, before, right? I mean, there was nothing to disallow it in this particular case. I guess there might be something we could do moving forward, and I don't know. I'd have to refer to Jason on how we, whether we can pick and choose on what is or what is not allowed in the backyard. But basically, it's a recreational facility, and there are just so many things in backyards, you could go on forever. And I don't know if we can single out pickleball courts or not. And quite honestly, at this particular point, we don't even know if it's going to be an issue or not until it's actually there and play actually takes place. It's just like tennis or swimming, or you have kids playing in swing sets or bouncing on trampolines. It takes place kind of intermittently. It's not going to be probably something that's going to go on, you know, twenty-four hours a day. And I'm not discounting, you know, concerns at all. There are a lot of things I probably wouldn't like to see, you know, outside my backyard and somebody else's yard or whatever, but I don't get to pick and choose those things. Now, if they become an issue, you know, with disturbances and noise and things like that, then there are methods, you know, to approach that, and that would be to report it, you know, to the police for them to come out and see if they can assist in, you know, quieting things down. But, yeah, I don't know. I don't want to put Jason on the spot right now. Maybe it's something we can consider in the future.
You're not putting me on the spot. I can, I can just, it's not what the gentleman's going to want to hear, but we have to have a rule against something before we keep someone from doing it. And we don't have any rule that prohibits this. We can look at its placement. It can be in the setback, all these things which were looked at. And so what, you know, I can advise you, but you also need to know this is not your only means of recourse. If you have a neighbor that's creating a nuisance next door to you with this pickleball court, talk to an attorney and sue them. I mean, you can always do that. Well, hang on. And so, but something's got to be a nuisance first. It hasn't happened yet.
I agree. We met with Mayor, we met with Mr. Muckslaw a couple of times, certainly understand his concern. We just couldn't find things in the municipal code to prevent it. When you look at this particular neighborhood from area photo, you'll see swim pools, basketball courts, putting green, and other recreational facilities. So we believe it falls in line with those.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Larry?
I guess the reality is, is we had no basis to reject or refute the proposal, but again, it is an awful recreation thing that can't fit in the backyard. It's not something that's unreasonable anymore than a basketball court is or a swimming pool. If you have a family with a lot of children, who has a lot of friends over, you can have quite a bit of noise generated in the evenings, especially the summer evenings, late into the evening, by kids just frolicking in the pool. And that's the way it is. Until there is a problem, I guess we don't, we don't have an issue to deal with. In other words, until there's a noise problem, we don't have a noise problem to deal with. It's supposition to say it's going to be a lot of noise or anticipation, but the reality may not be that. We need to cross the bridge and get to the bridge.
One thing, that pickleball court is eight feet from my property line, okay? And it's closest to our master bedroom, thirty feet. The industrial engineers have studied this property.
Sarah, I'm sorry. You've had your three minutes. We're going to move on to the next item. I appreciate you coming.
There were no lights on the, on their plan, as he said.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, action on the minutes. Regular meeting of October twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three.
I have a question. There's one word in there that caught me up short.
On the minutes?
Yeah, it was about the approval of the, approval of the car wash.
Let's see.
Just one word that completely makes sense. The ninth line from the bottom of the section, which dealt with twenty-two thousand, twenty-three fifty-eight resolutions, the ninth line at the bottom, and what it reads is that the...
Oh, the wash bay would provide?
...will provide for cleaning, repairing, and welding our vehicles, plus improving efficiency of the department. The term welding in there is something that caught me off guard. I don't know if that's a correct term.
That's what I heard on the tape. But I can, I can call Karen on it, that is what I heard on the tape.
So that's what you put in the minutes?
Yes, we put in the minutes.
She just said that's what she heard on the tape.
Larry, I listened to the tape several times.
Second. That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Council members. Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Heinchel is absent.
Right. Motion carried five to zero. Next one is minutes of the special meeting of November seven, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Wozniak. Roll call vote.
Council members. Wilms.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
And Snow.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next item is reports. We have the financial report for the nine-month period ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-three. You can get the, you can see that report on the city website, and our results continue to be pretty consistent. Operating revenue was up seven point two percent for the first nine months of twenty-three versus the same period in twenty-twenty-two. County sales tax was up ten point four percent. City sales tax was up four point four percent, and those are all pretty consistent with what's been happening. Operating expenses were nine point seven percent below what was budgeted, so we've had pretty good results so far this year, and we're happy with our financial position. Okay. Next item is, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
So move. Second.
Was Mr. Snow and Mr. Wozniak. Roll call vote.
Council members. Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. The first ordinance is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. And as you know, this is something we normally do every year, so if there's no discussion, I'd like to entertain a motion to go to third and final.
If I might, so I just want to reiterate that this is for twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
Karen at the work session last week stated that all of our facilities are already full and ready to go for twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
So that's already taken care of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We also have done this for quite a number of years now as a city, when the first government tried to figure out, you know, suppliers, they want to bid to communities of our size. In fact, they may, I don't know how they do Little Rock, but they bid to large cities, but not to smaller, medium-sized cities like us. So many of them choose to go the route of taking informal bids. It's competitive because we base it on the prices we get, so it is a competitive manner, but it's just the formality is not there. Publishing it in the paper and then getting the formal documents.
Okay.
Second.
This is the motion to go to third and final reading.
To suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and go to third and final. Right. Mr. Wilms?
Second.
Okay, that was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler for motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final. Roll call vote.
Council members. Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. We now could use a motion to...
So move.
Second.
Mayor, you've got to read the...
Oh, I have to do the third reading first, sorry. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's Mr. Wozniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Council members. Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. The next ordinance is creating an active transportation advisory board, defining its purpose and membership and for other purposes. Is there a discussion?
There is. Mr. Chairman and Mr. Mayor, I've read through the proposal. I think it's a great idea. I have the workshop, we had the support, Paul Pepper sent us a memo endorsing it. I have a little bit of question and proposal for minor adjustments in it, and I gave you a handout of the proposed...
Excuse me. Larry, they can't hear you. Can you turn your mic on?
It is on.
Okay, can you...
I need to get a little closer, I guess.
Can you turn it off?
Turn it, turn it like that. Hello?
You're here now. No, we're here. Okay. Apologize for that. The copies are back there for the public. The copies are back there for the public. The amendments really deal with the membership. The proposal is for three members, it's a seven-member board, three members for a three-year term, starting out, then three members for a two-year term, and then one member for a one-year term. My recommendation is that we go three, two, and two, because that limits the amount of change-out to five people out of the seven in any two-year cycle. It balances it out a little bit in terms of stability for that board. The way it is now, you could have six members within a two-year period change. And so, it's a recommendation. Nobody likes it, we'll go on.
Oh, you want to talk about them one at a time?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The mayor is in the individuals. So...
So are you moving to amend?
Moving to amend section three C to change the appointment schedule to three, two, and two.
Yeah, right now it's three, three, and one on the original.
Yeah, I'd like, I don't know how it reveals, Phil, but this is going to be a little morious, you know, go through these point by point. Plus, these are really minor changes that I don't know that most of them are really necessary. I respect your opinion, but I would prefer, just let's just hit every highlight that you have here, and let's just go for all or none.
Mayor, there's a motion on the floor, there's not a second.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to amend this one section, so it's three, two, and two, right? Yeah, section three C, yeah. Is there a second?
So...
Yes, I second.
Okay, so now there's a debate on...
Yeah, now we can discuss that. And you've said you don't like taking them one at a time.
We've got a lot of them here. They're easy ones, so they should be easy to get through. It's either up or down.
What?
Nothing Larry does is easy.
Question? Why should we not just do the whole document as one? No reason. Okay, like a motion, we do...
There's a pending motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, there's already a motion, well, if I can interject a point, personally, I do think some of his points are better than others. For instance, the one about active transportation. That's a non-starter. That's a term of art, active transportation used all over the country.
But you're looking at the old one, not the new one.
Oh, you have a new one? Did you drop that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I thought I gave you one right here.
Oh, okay.
It takes that out of there.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got smarter to set one through today.
So, that happens. So the motion on the floor is for the three, two, and two? Is there any more discussion, or we can have a roll call vote on it? Okay, let's have a roll call vote, Wanda, on amending section three C.
I am going to interject, if you don't mind before we vote. I'm just going to vote no, simply because I think we ought to do the whole document at one time, not go through point by point. I don't have an issue with it, but I say let's just, let's go through it, let's get it done, and let's move on. Now we can vote.
The roll call.
Okay, so who was the person who made the motion? It was Larry?
And the second was...
Wendy. Okay.
If we withdrew both of those, we could just go to what Doug says, right? Jason?
If the movement wanted to withdraw, well, at this point, there's been a, the roll call's been called for. So at this point, the rules do not permit further debate.
Okay.
So really, anything else that you say after that is out of order.
Okay.
So that's really all I can offer you at this time.
That's all I need, thank you.
Okay, roll call vote on this first section three C amendment. Councilmember Snow?
Abstain.
Hughes?
No.
Wasniak?
No.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
No. Okay, that was...
Tails one to three.
Yeah, one, three, one, yeah, okay.
So Mayor, you're still on first reading of the proposed ordinance? So any other motions to amend would be in order?
So the next item would be for A. I think the important part there is to add a secretary to that board to make them accountable to not only us as the governing body, but also to the public, to keep some record of what they do and what they act on, what their recommendations are. The rule does not propose a secretary, it only proposes a chairperson. I think we are obligated to keep some records for committees. And if we don't require it in the ordinance, then it's arbitrary that they do that or don't do that, it's their prerogative. And I think we have a responsibility to the citizens to require a secretary.
Are we allowed to, should we motion to the document as a whole? Do we have to do that, or can we just accept it?
You're allowed to make any sort of motion that you want to make to amend since it is in writing. So at this point, Larry has not made a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to review the amendment in whole.
The mayor needs to recognize you first.
Go ahead, Wendy.
May I please make a motion to review the document amendment as a whole instead of in part?
So you're going to, so you want to move the entire thing as one amendment?
Please. I would like to move to do that, please.
Okay, so you're moving to amend to...
The whole document in whole.
Include all the changes which are in Mr. Wilmes's proposal?
Yes.
And I would second that.
That was a motion by Wendy Hughes and a second by Mr. Fowler.
So just to, for clarity, so it's about every change on the document, which theoretically is also the one you just voted on, the three C. So it's everything on this piece of paper, so the debate is on the motion to amend, Mayor.
Okay.
So it continues through the proposal of changes. Item four A, we covered adding a secretary.
We need a vote on that, correct?
No, you have to debate first, and then...
Okay.
Yeah, they moved and seconded, but now there's discussion, right?
We're adopting the whole thing, Larry.
Well, he's discussing it.
I'm discussing it so that you want to clearly understand where it was coming from and the changes proposed here.
Can we make that debate happen after we...
No. No, so Mayor, who would be recognized at this point to speak?
Uh, Larry.
Okay, so at this point, okay. So Mr. Wilmes's discussion, discussion on his amendment is in order, you're on, Mayor.
So four A, we've talked about. Four B is to organize and adopt bylaws consistent with its purpose and function. In other words, what I'm saying here is that we need to point them in the right direction of what they are intended to do, so that when they adopt bylaws, they don't talk about the dealing with the ditch grading or leave disposal or something like that. The four C has to do with that the rules, that they, the meeting schedule, the meeting schedules, not the place or the time, but the meeting schedule would be called out in their bylaws, not arbitrary by each board as the boards are created, so that there's some uniformity and some standardization. Now, that doesn't prevent them from changing the bylaws. What it does is that they would need to change the bylaws to change the meetings, but then everyone would know about it. And the last item is section five E, and that has to do with advocate for the continued expansion and improvements of trails and active transportation facilities in Bella Vista, but consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan that we have. In other words, it's not arbitrary and capricious on their part, but it follows the plan. Doesn't mean that they can't interpret the plan. Doesn't mean that they can't follow the guidelines from the Regional Planning Commission if it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. But it gives them a roadmap to follow in terms of their, of their recommendations and findings. So those are my conclusions. So with those.
Any more discussion?
I think all those changes are appropriate and all excellent changes. The reason why it shouldn't pass.
We've got a motion, right?
And we have, yeah, we have a motion second. Ready for a roll call vote?
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
This is on the motion to amend.
Motion to amend?
Right.
The entire piece. Councilmembers, Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Okay, now, does he have to read it again first, or can we suspend the rules?
Still on first reading, so...
Suspend the rules and go to third and final.
If you want to make that motion, that would be in order.
Yep.
It's in ordinance.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Larry seconded it.
Okay, that's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmes. This is motion to go to third and final reading. Suspend the rules, right.
Okay, councilmembers, Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Motion carried five to zero. I'll read it for a third and final time. Ordinance creating an active transportation advisory board, defining its purpose and membership and for other purposes.
Move to be approved?
Second.
That was Mr. Snow and Mr. Fowler.
Councilmembers, Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero to pass the ordinance.
Thank you.
Next one is ordinance amending section eighteen twenty, clearance of unsightly or unsanitary conditions on real property of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to allow vegetation taller than ten inches to support monarch butterflies and other pollinators and for other purposes.
I was going to say, we discussed it at length during the work session last week, and I think it's a really nice idea. You know, it gives people really some direction, some clarity on, you know, native plants, you know, the contract butterflies, bees, and things like that. It also gives our residents direction on invasive species, invasive plants, that they actually, you know, should not plant, you know, that are not healthy for the environment and our own saw. But yeah, I think it's a great idea. As a matter of fact, I already have a place designated in my yard. I'm going to do this, put this in. So if there's not anybody else, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmes, motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final. Roll call vote?
Councilmembers, Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes? Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I'll read it for a third and final. Amending section eighteen twenty, clearance of unsightly or unsanitary conditions on real property of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to allow vegetation taller than ten inches to support monarch butterflies and other pollinators and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Motion to, oh, go ahead, Larry.
I'd like to thank the staff for the work that they did in putting this together. I don't know how many were involved, but it certainly was a nice job, and it was thorough, and it was easy to understand. And it makes good sense for us as a monarch city to provide that support for the butterflies. I know there are, if you go to the nurseries in the springtime, they have butterfly plants that you can buy and different things for hummingbirds and whatnot. So I think this is a great addition to our code. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Jerry Snow. Roll call vote?
Councilmembers, Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next one is an ordinance amending section twenty-four twenty-three, general installation landscaping and care and maintenance practices of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to eliminate authorization for placement of decorative stone and city rights of way and for other purposes. Any discussion?
I think it's a good move. It keeps parking of vehicles in the wrong place from happening, so... You could have a whole front yard with a parking lot if you allowed that to be done.
Yeah, again, we discussed this at length during the work session last week, and we have a lot of issues in Bella Vista where people have put, you know, stone. Now, you already cannot put flowers, shrubs, grass, or things like that that would be, you know, would cause obstruction. Actually, yeah, so... Okay, I'm sorry, flowers, shrubs, or grass can be placed in the city on rights-of-way, but just stones is listed in one of those things we can place, but this causes the city huge issues. Those are the first couple of calls I got called out on when I was elected like six, seven years ago, the issues it was causing, you know, with clogging up our culverts and different things like that. So this is actually probably long overdue. I know it causes our street department a lot of excessive work, you know, going out and cleaning those things out. So it's a good move, something we should do. So I'd like to make a motion to move to third and final and suspend the rules.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmes. Roll call vote on motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
And Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I'll read it for a third time. Amending section twenty-four twenty-three, general installation landscaping and care and maintenance practices of the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to eliminate authorization for placement of decorative stone and city rights of way and for other purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmes, roll call vote?
Councilmembers, Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next ordinance is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Auto Group in the amount of forty thousand nine hundred eighty dollars for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Silverado fifteen-hundred truck for use by the Community Development Services Department. Is there any discussion?
It should be a move to go to third and final.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Suspend the rule.
I'm sorry, suspend the rule.
Second.
Motion by Jerry Snow and second by Mr. Fowler. Motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final.
Councilmembers, Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried four to one. Is there any more discussion? Oh, I have to read it for the third and final, sorry. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Auto Group in the amount of forty thousand nine eighty for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-three Chevrolet Silverado fifteen-hundred truck for use by the Community Development Services Department. Any discussion?
No discussion. I know that this was in the budget that we approved at the beginning of the year. Isn't that correct, Doug? Yeah, so I'd just be curious, why not move to third and final? And just, and get it off our agenda?
We just did.
I know we did, but there was a no vote on that. And you don't have to answer, I was just curious. No answer.
Too much money for the truck. You can go find a truck. You can go find a truck cheaper than that. Even with the state bid. That's my only thing. US, that's the answer.
I thought we got a really good deal on it, didn't we Doug? Okay, I can make a motion to approve.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
That was, uh, Mr. Fowler and Mr. Snow. A roll call vote?
Councilmembers Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
No.
Wilmz?
Yes.
And Fowler?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried four to one. Uh, next ordinance is waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with McClarty Daniel of Springdale in the total amount of thirty-eight thousand seven ninety-two and fifty cents for the purchase of one twenty twenty-three Dodge Ram fifteen hundred tradesman truck for city lease to the Bella Vista Recycling Center and amending the twenty twenty-three budget. And I, uh, Jason, that, I believe it amends the budget to add the forty-five thousand revenue, isn't that right?
There's a grant revenue of forty-five thousand dollars total for this, and it actually, the grant was for a truck and trailers. And so just out of an abundance of caution, my recommendation was go ahead and amend the budget to recognize that revenue to, in turn authorize the expense because it's not accounted for in the current year budget. I would note however, that this is a direct pay. I believe that the solid ways people pay the dealership directly, I don't think the money passes through the city. So, um, anyway, I, I think we are authorizing the expenditure and it is a, an income to us. So that's why I went ahead and put the, the, the budget amendment in there. But this is grant money which we didn't expect, which we're turning out and spending on this truck. And then it, to those who may not know, we have leased several vehicles to the recycling center in the past in exchange for them providing service to citizens at a minimal amount. And there's this basic insurance requirement and things like that. So I believe the intention is to include that on that list of deals.
Yeah, I did want to explain to the council, you know, this wasn't at the work session and it came up at the last minute. And I, I know some people don't like to rush things through, but since it was a case that outside people are giving us money, I believe in going ahead when it, when you're getting free money, right? So, uh, and the second thing is Karen Hunt called me right before the meeting and she had a sick child come up late in the day. And, uh, so she was regretful she couldn't be here to talk about this and the salt and sand. But, uh, she did, you know, confer with the gentleman from the recycling center. So they're here if you have any further questions.
Question? It, it says, um, for city lease.
We, 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 the, the recycling center does not own their equipment. The city owns it and leases it to them.
Okay.
As a service to the, to the, um, recycling center. Uh, it's just a, I'm not sure what the legal term is for it, but it's a convenience of.
A lease, well, it's, i- it is legally, it's a lease. I mean, we do it in, what we get in return is recycling service for citizens. So, um, that's what we've done in the past to, to cooperate with their efforts and it benefits the citizens by doing so.
And, uh, this is just for clarification, is all for me. So, uh, who, who is the grant from?
Um, Benton County Solid Waste District.
And it was for forty-five thousand?
Right.
So what happens with the balance?
Well, we don't see that money. It was, uh, the, we were, uh, again, I, I, the people who were directly involved in this were not me. I wrote the ordinance, but my understanding is that, um, we were approved or the grant was approved for up to forty-five thousand dollars for a truck and trailers. And that's not a mandate that you spend all of that. We don't get that extra money. I think it just goes unspent and we don't get it.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wilmz. Uh, motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Roll call vote? Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I'll read it for a third and final time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with McClarty Daniel Springdale in a total amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-two and fifty cents for the purchase of one twenty twenty-three Dodge Ram fifteen hundred tradesman truck for city lease to the Bella Vista Recycling Center and amending the twenty twenty-three city budget. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
It was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wasniak. Uh, roll call vote on the motion to approve.
Councilmembers Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Uh, next one is a resolution setting the meeting schedule of the Bella Vista City Council for calendar year twenty twenty-four. And the, uh, schedule is attached. We talked about it at the work session, so.
Will it be approved?
Second.
That was, uh, Mr. Snow and Mr. Wasniak. Motion to approve the schedule.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes? Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried five to zero. Um, I might mention, uh, I wanted to give you food for thought. I have had some people mention, um, that it might be better if the, uh, meetings started a little bit earlier uh, because it's hard on some of the employees having, you know, they live far from here. So they have to kind of, normally they work eight to four-thirty and they have to kind of wait around for the meeting to start. So one possibility would be to start the meeting at six P M. And still keep the work sessions at five-thirty like they are. I looked at what all, all the other cities do around Northwest Arkansas, and four of them start at six, two start at six-thirty and one starts at five-thirty. So you can argue that six is still, you know, we want to have them late enough that people can get home, come after work and be at the meeting. So you're kind of balancing citizens' needs versus the, uh, employees, so. That's just something to think about.
I don't have an issue. Jason, do we have to pass something on city council for, in order to put that, to enact that?
I've looked at the rules before the meeting started and the, the time of meeting is not dictated in the rules. Uh, in years past, we put the time of meeting on the calendar, uh, but we did not do that this year. So, um, my suggestion to you would be if there's any inkling of, of setting times that are different than what we've done, that just a resolution in the future to, um, set times uh, would be appropriate to amend the calendar to set different times.
I just brought it up this month because that way it gives us some time if we want to do a change to do it in December and it would start next year, you know, so.
Put it on, put it on.
Something you could think about.
Agenda for resolution for, for December and we can consider it.
Yeah.
Question, why, uh, uh, we got the work session at five-thirty? Why would we not just go ahead and start, have the council meeting start at five-thirty? What's the?
Well, we could do that. Uh, I noticed that, uh, that's a little earlier than most cities do. So, you know, I wanted to, I would be happy to do it as early as possible, but, uh, I didn't want to do it what was perceived to be too early for the citizens. But it's, it would be possible to do it at five-thirty, something to think about.
And we're just talking about thirty minutes difference there, I mean.
Well, if someone's getting off work at five P M. and they work in Bentonville, it could be very difficult to get from their point to Bella Vista.
Yeah.
In that thirty minutes.
Yeah, that does make a difference, yeah, so.
Having a little cushion of time would be probably a little more appropriate.
So we need to be considerate of the, uh, council members themselves being able to get here if they, if they, they are employed yet. So some of us aren't, but some of them are.
Uh, Jim?
For what it's worth, my experience in fourteen years here, or thirteen now, and eight with the Corum Court, if there's a hot button item, they'll be here regardless of what time you set it up. And you can, those who've been here a while, you can see that when something comes up like that. They find a way to get here. You know, five-thirty is, is fine, six is fine, but if they want to be in a meeting, they'll be here. Regardless of what time, you could put it at noon and they'd be here.
Well, I appreciate your insights, Jim. Uh, points of experience. So, uh, anyway, that's something to think about and we can maybe figure out what we want to entertain next, uh, month. One thing I do like that the planning commission does is they have their work session and their meeting at the same time. It does kind of cut down on confusion. It's all, everything's the same time. So that is something to think about.
It, it could be an issue though, like we had, was it a week ago or two weeks ago? Where we had, uh, the, the planning commission meeting at four-thirty and we stayed at a work session at five-thirty and they didn't get over with until six-thirty or seven and.
Yeah.
So it, 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 when there's, when there's a concurrency of meetings between us, uh, sometimes it's important for the council members to participate. If nothing else, to observe and find out what the comments were, positions were of that other body.
Sure.
If it comes to us to be approved and some of those things do get a second shot at it with the council. So.
So it's a lot of different, uh, angles to look at.
So it, it depends upon what the calendars are and I'm, I'm not sure who keeps the, who keeps those. You probably do the, the planning commission stuff, right? No, behind you. Taylor, Taylor. So I, I don't know if the two of you can get together and, and, and try and schedule things so that we don't have a conflict or look at that with the schedule that we've adopted. I think the planning commission adopts a schedule as well. Do they adopt a schedule or?
Yes.
Okay, so if we have a conflict, we'll need to address that.
You know, I would just, because I go to those meetings as well. That was a very, uh, unique thing because of the holiday and the setting, because we had bumped up the council meetings.
No, no, or we have both meetings on the same, on the same, of course, on the same evening.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's it.
It's a rare circumstance that that happens. But I would also say, just in terms of the time, I'm not advocating for any particular time, but they have their meetings at four-thirty with public hearings that are publicly noticed and people have to come in and if they're gonna be heard at the public hearing at four-thirty. And we had a room full this past week, so, um, maybe that goes to what Mr. Wasniak was saying about they will be here. I, uh, I do think it's typical though to give people a fair opportunity to get off work, to be able to, to, to come. So I, it's strictly, you know, you're not gonna go wrong, it's just whatever you want to decide to do.
Okay. So that'll give you all something to cogitate, uh, before next month, so. Okay, the next one is a resolution adopting amendments to the city of Bella Vista employee handbook. And we went over these in the work session. If there's any questions, I think Glenn is still here tonight, hiding back there in case you have any further questions on that.
Will it be approved?
From, from the presentation, from the presentation that was given to us by the H R director, um, it appears that those are positive additions to the staff as a benefit in, in, in the overall view.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, Mr. Snow made a motion to approve.
Second.
And Mr. Fowler, it was the second. A roll call vote?
Councilmembers Wilmz?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. I'm gonna announce some of the future meetings. Next city council work session is five-thirty P M. on Monday, December eleventh, right here at the Bella Vista District Court. Next city council regular meeting, six-thirty P M. Monday, December eighteen at Bella Vista District Court. Planning commission work session is four-thirty P M. on Thursday, November thirty at Bella Vista District Court. Planning commission regular meeting, four-thirty P M. Monday, December eleven, Bella Vista District Court. And Board of Construction Appeals is three P M. Tuesday, December twelve, if necessary, at Bella Vista District Court. So if there is nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.